The House will come to order. The Committee of the Whole will come to order. So, members, we are continuing our deliberations on House Bill 1001. We have completed our work on the two standing committee amendments, and we're now in that order of business of Committee of the Whole amendments. So you should have five Committee of the Whole amendments. First one is Committee of the Whole Amendment Number One. Representative Larson, if you'd like a privilege of the floor.
If I may, Mr. Speaker, privilege of the floor.
Please proceed.
The first item, Mr. Chairman, as we concluded our discussion prior to lunch, there was some conversation that we had on testing availability to employers across the state through the Department of Health. And would just provide to the members that if you go onto their website, right at the top it says COVID-19, boom, hit it, I done it, even I can do it. Hit COVID-19, comes up new screen, come down left, employer test kits, boom, hit it. Tells your employers what they need to do to get those test kits. So you might share that with your folks back home, that those are available, and how to get them. So, second thing, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Speaker, is that this amendment that is before you, the Committee of the Whole Amendment 001 to House Bill 1001, in that, what I really do is delete the bill. I take out all of Section 2. We're going to have opportunity to discuss the bill after we go through all the amendments, and we'll do the Committee of the Whole and discuss the bill. And that's probably going to be a more appropriate time to do that. I just want to preface, and that conversation is that my concern with the bill in here is that Wyoming has always strived to be a business-friendly state. And we've looked at business owners as the real economic engine drivers to our state, and allowing them to make the decisions that they feel are in the best interest of their businesses. And I think that my concern with this bill is that we come in and put regulations on there that really shouldn't be. A business has the right to have, a business owner should be able to determine what the conditions of employment are. Certainly, if people don't want, don't like those conditions, they don't have to work there. And that certainly could create problems for the business, because he might not have any employees. But at the end of the day, I think it's his right, and we'll get into that, and I'll bring that. But that was going to be the essence of my conversation in this amendment. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully withdraw Committee of the Whole Amendment Number One.
Thank you, Representative Larson. So to be clear, ladies and gentlemen, the reason I kind of maybe gave a little leeway in this is, this is basically what you would see in a third reading amendment as a delete the enacting clause. That's essentially what this is when I looked at it. Representative Larson and I spoke about, you know, what he was trying to get to. And I said, look, is he, and he came to me, is there's probably another way to do this? I said, yes, but if you want to make a comment that this is, you know, what you're anticipating having a discussion about, and then withdraw, that is appropriate. So with that, we're on to Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Two. And I see the sponsor of Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Two coming through the door at this point. Chairman Zwanser.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Two to House Bill 1001, and ask of your favorable introduction or consideration. And this is back to the talking points I had earlier this morning on what constitutes a religious exemption. And I know we did have some discussion on the current federal format. But I, you know, as we've all studied this, and I certainly work at a healthcare facility, this issue continues to come up where people are finding, I would say, creative ways. And I don't want to question anyone's motives or their religion. But you know, when the cases say that they vaccinated for every other disease, and their kids are vaccinated to go to school, and all of a sudden they've quickly found a reason to believe of a religious nature that this vaccine is not appropriate, that troubles me. And I certainly know there are many religions who have very strict tenants about vaccines and other medical treatments, and I certainly respect those. But what I'm attempting to do is tighten the language a bit. And I don't know, you know, in a court of law, if this makes any difference from the current language versus, you know, adding a couple sentences. But the terminology that LSO could find in other states and what's being widely used, as I know many of us have heard on this floor, is this sincerely held religious belief, and it burdens your religious exercise. And so putting that same language in the bill, I don't think hurts it at a level, at least of a directive to employers that, you know, they may need one more piece of investigation. I certainly don't want a nine-page questionnaire. But I do believe it's important that we differentiate the sincerely held religious beliefs from people falsely claiming religion as a barrier. And those people, if they really truly do feel these ways, should go talk to a medical professional or find another exemption that doesn't invoke religion.
Thank you, Chairman. Representative Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just in comment to that amendment, proposed amendment, the hospital that has started this mandate discussion that exists in my community, they have even gone completely the other way, where they're no longer using the term religious exemption at all, and are simply using the term strongly held belief, which goes away from any concerns about particular religious tenants. They do not require that a member of the clergy, for example, sign your request for strongly held belief exemption. So I'd encourage a no vote on the amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment, further discussion. Representative Gray.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think the Chairman of Labor Health and the Chairman of, and the Vice Chairman of Minerals today did a really good job of laying out why this runs afoul of federal practice and federal interpretation in the court system of these exemptions. And I will say, you know, it's been interesting hearing, you know, some of the arguments, and then some of the people bringing arguments, some of the amendments contradicting those. Because one of the things we've heard is, well, we don't want to preempt federal law. And I think this bill is pretty clear that we're not doing that. I don't know if I, I don't agree with that, but that's the direction the body clearly wants to go. But now, in an amendment, this would probably preempt federal law. And so it's one of those things where, you know, I think we need to be consistent. If this body's decided we're not going to preempt federal law, which it appears it has, I don't think we should now say, well, we're going to preempt federal law in this area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other member for their first time, member for their first time? Well, we're not on first and second time. My apologies, I was just wishful thinking. Any other member on this amendment? We're on Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Two. Any other member? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Two, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Amendment has not been adopted. Next Committee of the Whole Amendment, Number Three. Representative Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Three to House Bill 1001. For explanation of the bill, I'd like to turn time over to the good representative from the middle part of the state.
Thank you, Representative Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before you, as amendment, Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Three, and this really takes place on page number seven and its lines five through 12. It's subsection B of this Section 2. The remainder of the amendment is really all about renumbering and relettering, and doesn't have a such leave change. But this is talking about penalizing these good businesses here in the state of Wyoming for noncompliance. And Wyoming is a strong business state. We support our businesses in every way. And this is just adding one more layer of government overreach and government intrusion that is certainly unnecessary to penalize these businesses. And so those of us that signed on to this amendment were just very concerned about seeing this kind of penalty put in place. And so we'd encourage your support, as we would like to remove that from this bill.
Thank you, Representative. Are there discussion? Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I respect strongly the words that were just said. But I will say, we are now trying to balance the operation of business with individual rights. And businesses have to do that through many, many different forms of discrimination and laws that deal with it. This section here has the, provides a mechanism in which if someone's aggrieved and the individual, their rights are violated, to have enforcement. Now, it's a hundred dollars in there. We had a long debate and a couple of motions that failed in committee. But the simple fact of the matter is, without an enforcement mechanism, you don't have any way to ensure that those rights of the individual are balanced out with the rights of the employer. And so there is another provision in this, and I don't know if I've seen the amendment or not, but regarding severance pay. That one, in my mind, I'm not that strong on that one. I don't think I particularly care for that. But having this oversight, a place to complain to, and someone to investigate, I think is necessary. You're not going to hear me say that very often. You see me up here trying to pull back regulation, trying to open up business, make it easier to operate. This is one of those rare circumstances where we're trying to find a balance. So I'd encourage a no vote. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment, further discussion. Madam Minority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I agree with the good Chair of Minerals. It seems to me that we've got a whole Section A regarding, regarding what's to be expected. And, you know, ultimately, I'll say I won't vote in favor of this bill. But what the bill does is it sets up what employers need to do, and how they need to do it. And then Section B sets up what the punishment is if employers don't do it. And there are two elements of the punishment. One is a hundred dollar a day fine, and the second is severance pay to workers. It seems to me that both are needed if there is to be compliance with Section A. Or else Section A is a mandate without any enforcement. And so I would urge a no vote.
Thank you. Representative Larson, Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I could add a little bit to the conversation on this bill does go, or this amendment does go a little bit further. If you go to page seven, starting in lines of 14, and you go on to the next page of the bill, and look at the down through Section D, what we're saying here is that if a, what the bill is saying here in a penalty is, if you've got somebody that is not complying with the conditions of Section 2 here, and the employee leaves, then you now have to pay them. We're going to require the company to pay a severance package to them. And that severance package, you may not pay anybody severances, severance package, and now you're going to be required to pay a severance package. And you keep going, and it can be up to 50% of the previous 13 weeks of their salary. I just think that this is punitive on business. And I don't know that I can, I would really encourage you to support the decisions that small businesses get to make, and then not, I mean, it's, we're putting it on them, but I just can't comprehend why we would then require them to pay a severance to those people, to the employees that chose to leave that employment. So I'd encourage an aye vote.
Further discussion. Representative Summers, for your first time, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. So I have a question for the good Chair of Minerals on this provision. So the way I read the bill, if we get at that point in time, and we have a, we have a rule in place, but we have court cases going forward, the way this bill reads in Section 6 is that Section 2 would not go away through the entire time of that, of that appeals process. So potentially, during that period of appeals, a company could be in violation of federal law, which could be assessing a penalty as well. And so my question is, is this true then, that we would have that employee either having to pay a federal fine or a state fine in order to do business in the state of Wyoming? That's my question to the good Chair of Minerals.
Thank you. Representative Yen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman. So I'm checking out statute 279106. So 279106 is what deals with fair employment practices, and how you file a complaint, you determine the complaint, and you appeal for a hearing. So we have a process for this. It doesn't involve a fine. Usually what the remedy is, is if the employee was unfairly relieved of their position, they could be entitled to back pay as a remedy for the period where they were fired. I don't think the fine really makes sense in this situation. And I would like to see maybe an amendment to use this process that we already have in place, rather than have a new separate process and a fine for having this situation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Further discussion, further discussion on the amendment. Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On and in favor of the amendment. And so, ladies and gentlemen, the other thing that is interesting about the bill as it's currently crafted, you have to pay a severance of 13 weeks. But bill also provides that you, that you can still, in addition to that, you can receive unemployment or any other benefits. So in essence, you can make more money by quitting than by staying. And, you know, we had that problem earlier this year when the administration created unemployment benefits that exceeded the wages of those that were unemployed, and people wouldn't go back to work. And so that's also what this does. So now we're doing the same thing, except we're doing it with a state mandate versus a federal mandate. So on and fair.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Larson.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize to the body here. When we are intent, when myself and the co-sponsors of the amendment, we were looking at addressing the hundred dollar fine, and then the severance package. In our process today, we got a little tangled up. The severance portion didn't get put in here. So when you see the reference to it, it's just the renumbering. So that'll probably, the severance discussion for this amendment is off the table. We'll probably do that. If the bill moves forward, we'll do that in a second reading. And so this is, just to clarify, and I apologize again, that this is just dealing with the hundred dollar fine. So my apologies, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Chairman Zwanser.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Strongly against the amendment. I think this is the best business protection measure we could ever do, because the only two penalties in creating all of this law right now are the severance, which I'm pretty certain will come out of the bill before the end, and a hundred dollar fine. So otherwise, you have all this legislation with no penalty. So what does that open up? A lawsuit at any level of civil penalty you want, right? If I'm a good lawyer, and there's, you know, we're going to violate the law, this says the most they can charge is a hundred dollars a day while this is in effect. Without this, you violate the law, and you have a cause of action? I mean, I'm sure I'll have some attorneys get up here after me. I think this is protectionary in a really weird perverse way, that it's not an open lawsuit that you could go after for civil damages at a much higher penalty. And so if someone wants to correct me, that would be great. But that is my fear of unintended consequences. You take this out, you open it up to anything. This kind of limits your liability to a hundred dollars a day, which isn't great, but I think it's better than alternatives that could come.
Thank you. We have a new word for the afternoon, perverse, perverse. All right. Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So with regards to our speaker, if there is no penalty, you can't ask for one. And so you can't have unlimited or ask for a different amount. There is no penalty. And that's, the purpose of this is to be easy on employers and try to get them to cooperate, but not penalize them.
Further discussion, further discussion. Representative Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just wrap up by saying, you know, we're trying to help our businesses, big and small, around the state of Wyoming. And as we impose more penalties upon them, it does nothing but make it more difficult to do business in the state of Wyoming. We're a business-friendly state. Let's keep it that way. Let's not impose more penalties. There's other ways that the agencies can go about enforcing this and encouraging this, and making this go along, without imposing a financial penalty upon these businesses. So again, I'd encourage an aye vote for the amendment, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Saying no further discussion, no further discussion. Members, we are voting on Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Three, House Bill 1001. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. I think I heard some volume changes, but I don't know if there's enough voices. So all those in favor, please rise. Are those opposed? This will be a close vote, so everybody, please rise, stand still. So the vote has failed, 26, 28. Thank you very much for your patience. So the, excuse me, Committee of the Whole Amendment Number, Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Three has not been adopted. Next Committee of the Whole Amendment is Number Four. Privilege of the floor, Representative Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I have a guest today, two of them, yeah, two of them. Up here on the south, up here in the south, up here on the north is the First Lady of House District 42, my sweet wife Judy. Stand up. Thank you. Then we also have my granddaughter Nicole.
Welcome to the House. So good to see you ladies here today. This is Blackburn. Thank you very much. Next amendment for our considerations, Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Four. Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would move Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Four to House Bill 1001. Ask for your favorable consideration. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a pretty simple amendment. And I think it is essential that we pass this amendment to protect all of the employers who are going to be, that may, that will be, subject to House Bill 1001 if it becomes law. And it's, if you go to, this is a amendment on page 14, but mostly on page 15. And what this does, it protects employers from being put in the crosshairs of two contradictory laws, one federal and one state, where if you violate one, you will necessarily, if you abide by one, you will necessarily be violating the, another law. And so because of the laws of the land and as they sit, we know that federal laws have supremacy whenever it's applicable to an employer, as opposed to a state law. And we've had various discussions about this. And you've also seen a bunch of emails from various employers around the state saying, please don't put us in the middle of this, so that if we have to comply with this law, we have to violate OSHA or MSHA or any other directive that is a federally mandated law. And so if you, what it reads is, the provision of Section 2 of this act shall not be enforced on or after this date if this, on the COVID vaccine requirement or mandate of the Wyoming employers to the extent that those provisions conflict with federal law, rule, regulation, or order. So that's, basically, it's a catch-all, so that our, for example, our good friends in the soda ash industry, who have to comply with various OSHA and MSHA laws. And if those laws require something different than this mandate, they can stay in conformance with federal law. And they are not subject to federal MSHA or OSHA fines. And it's really a big deal, and this is real. And I'll just give you a real-life example. The state of Utah basically had a law that just came out, actually, it was the governor of that state came out and said, we're not going to comply with the MSHA requirements for a vaccine mandate. And the first thing then that happened after that was they were contacted by the federal government and said that they're taking the supremacy away from, primacy away from Utah. So now, the MSHA is being orchestrated and run by the feds instead of having the state do it. Our OSHA and our MSHA are basically primacy. So we've taken over the responsibilities of the state, and we operate those ourselves. They're saying, no, no, if you don't go by our federal laws, then we're going to take that primacy away from you. In addition to that, though, if, and then if you continue not to, if you violate OSHA or MSHA, you can be fined, and various other multiple punitive measures that they can take against you. And I would respectfully submit that this is, our state should do everything in our power to protect our employers, so that they don't violate federal law. And it's fine and dandy for us to say, we want to have, want the federal government out of our back pocket and out of our, in our personal business and our lives. But we don't want it to do it to the detriment of our employers, so that they are mandated to break federal law. So this is just a mechanism to protect them. So appreciate your support.
Thank you. Representative Stiff.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. I want to echo the support for this Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Four, as expressed by the representative from District Eight. Article 6, Clause 2 of the United States Constitution provides, as you are well aware, that this Constitution and the laws of the United States made, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land. The judges in every state shall be bound thereby, anything in the Constitution or laws of any state, to the contrary notwithstanding. So that is the supremacy clause of the United States Constitution. And what this amendment does is just to make sure that employers are not subject to conflicting laws at the same time. So it's conceptually quite simple. It's a no-brainer. This is, in some ways, this amendment or some version of it is a must-pass amendment to make House Bill 1001 constitutional. So I ask for you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Stever.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To the bringer of the amendment. Article 10, Section 5 of the Wyoming Constitution says, "No corporation organized under the laws of the Wyoming Territory or any other jurisdiction other than the state shall be permitted to transact business, transact business in the state till it has, shall, accepted the Constitution of this state and filed with such acceptance in accordance with the laws thereof." Can you explain how this is working here? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative Yen, and then Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So not only would this risk the OSHA and MSHA compliance, this would risk for every hospital and nursing home in the state compliance with Medicaid and Medicare rules, with CMS. So every So every nursing home, every hospital would be able to risk taking the federal reimbursement from Medicaid if they aren't allowed to follow the CMS rules that come down. We don't know what the CMS rules that come down are. They could mirror exactly what we have in this bill. They could not. The problem is if they don't mirror what's in this bill for the allowable exemptions, or if those rules do not fit within the state statute, and they have to choose with obeying state statute versus obeying CMS rules, then they risk all of their Medicaid and Medicare payers. We have about a hundred thousand, a hundred ten thousand Medicare recipients. There's some overlap with that with Medicaid as well. We have about sixty something thousand Medicaid recipients. This will, if they, if they aren't able to obey both CMS rules and the state statute without this amendment, you will put a lot of your hospitals and nursing homes at risk. So I urge you to consider that when you consider this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. All right, well, I'm confused. Okay, so I have the amendment in front of me in the bill. Page fourteen, line twenty-one. What we, what this is going to say is, subject to Section six of this act. Okay, the provisions of this act shall be repealed upon the earlier of. Okay, well, we're in Section six right there. Now, granted, things have been renumbered by amendments. Okay, so I don't see any deletions, which then still has this, the date regarding the appeal, and then the sunset date. So those are still in as I read this. And then Section six, which I guess would, you really would want to be Section seven, which is in actually Section five as amended by the Standing Committee Amendment, has this savings clause of, to the extent, so the provisions of the Section two of this act shall not be enforced on after the day of the rule. And I'm saying this, to the extent that those provisions conflict. I like that language because I keep seeing those things that aren't being preempted by federal law. I'm just concerned that the amendment confuses me. That was a question, Mr. Speaker.
I did think there was something rhetorical in that. And so, thank you, Chairman. Chairman's want answer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Did have the same concerns, have been back talking to LSO. And it is correct that on the Standing Committee Amendment, it's a little out of our normal drafting rules, but we did change Section six to Section four and then renumbered, even though there has been a discussion, LSO tells me it works. As much as I might think it's badly drafted, they are aware and they did it as such based on the Standing Committee Amendment changing the original six to four. They forgot to say renumber seven to five, but they said renumber is necessary, and they're counting that as it making sense. So they, I'm just letting you know, the LSO attorneys have said this works even though it looks really odd.
So Chairman, our confusion is diffused with that? Thank you very much. Let's go with Chairman Nicholas.
Just for my understanding, when I asked LSO, because I had the same concern, on page fourteen, section, line nine, nineteen, it says Section six. In the Standing Committee Amendment, that is now Section five. So this is a, the new Section six, which, that's why it's on page fifteen, line sixteen.
Thank you. Further discussion. Representative Greer? I'm sorry, Representative Gray, looking back there to the back microphone. Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So there's two ways to interpret this amendment. One is that it's just duplicative because Section five, after the renumbering, already says that this is repealed. And Roman et I, the date of federal law, regulation, rule, or standard takes legal effect that has the effect of requiring Wyoming employers to comply with the federal COVID-19 vaccine mandate and any challenge, dot, 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 is exhausted. That's already there. Now, what I'm concerned on this language, and this is the second way to read this, is that it does not allow the legal challenge to go through the process. And if there's a stay, the way I read this is that suddenly, if it goes into effect, if the date of the mandate goes into effect and there's a stay, well, that date is passed and it's a quote-unquote enacted. It's enacted, although there's a stay on what's been enacted. I don't think that's the intent. Either way, though, whether it's duplicative, the original language is better. And I think we should just keep it and reject this and debate exhausted tomorrow until we're exhausted. And I just, I think this is not a good direction to go. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Craig O., and then Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a question for the bringer of the amendment. To echo the former speaker's comments or questions is, what happens if there is a legal challenge? What is the intent of this language? Does that, while the, while a stay is in place or while there's litigation ongoing until we know the ultimate resolution of the case? Because we can talk about the supremacy clause all day long, but until the challenge to the federal mandate or law is exhausted, we don't know whether the supremacy clause actually applies. And so my question is, what is the intent of this particular amendment while that litigation is ongoing? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Much as I hate to say it, I think we should vote for this amendment. And here's my thinking. The existing language just says until legal action is exhausted. So visualize your local nursing home, forty beds, maybe twenty beds, your local small-town hospital. How long do you think they can stay in operations without Medicare and Medicaid money? Probably not a month. They will not be there if we wait two or three years for the legal remedies to be exhausted. And I get angry, okay? I have been angry since the Afghanistan debacle. And it, I wasn't down, and then the mandates came out. I am, I got steam out of my head like for the last two months. I get that. But it doesn't, we're angry at a guy or several people in DC sixteen hundred miles away. We can't deplace that anger onto our Wyoming nursing homes and our Wyoming hospitals and put them out of business in a month just so we can say, ah, we got you. We can't. We just cannot. I really think we have to pass this amendment.
Thank you, Representative Stiff and the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. Just to address two issues, for the question raised by the representative from Natrona County, there's a pretty significant difference between this amendment and the current language of the bill because the current language of the bill would allow an employer, for example, to be subjected to conflicting requirements during the pendency of litigation. Whereas if you adopt this language, the intent is that, so to the extent that the law, rule, regulation, or order imposes a COVID vaccine requirement or mandate, to the extent that it does that, then Section two of this bill would not be enforceable. With respect to the other very interesting question of, procedurally, what happens if there's a federal stay? There's certainly the intent of this amendment that the Section two of House Bill 1001, if enacted, would be in good force and effect during a stay of any federal mandate. That's certainly the intent of this language, whether the wordsmithing quite gets you exactly there. I think the literal words do, but that's the intent of this. The idea is, and that's why it's not a repealer, because the existing language is a repealer. And the thought was, if there's a federal mandate that stayed, we would still want House Bill 1001 to still be in good force and effect. That's the, that's the intent, at least as I understand it, of this amendment.
Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. And really, this is the crux of the biscuit, this really piece right here. Because we do not want to bankrupt every hospital, every nursing home. And it's not just that, it's more than that. You go on to like the Wyoming Life Resource Center, a state facility, or any state facility that's getting Medicaid, Medicare dollars. You know, if you've got a period of time during this, during this court, these court cases, which could last two years or more, if we're going to not fund, not get any money out of the federal government to fund those, that's a problem. Now, you know, it also can extend on to federal contracts. Now, you know, we'd be able to rectify this before session, but YDOT. How much money, how many contracts do we get out of YDOT that are federally funded in our highways? Some of that money, federal money flows, I think, some of it flows down maybe to even counties. So the federal contract piece is also a problem. So I think this is, I think this is a good solution. If this isn't a good, if this isn't the right solution, we have to solve this problem yet in the next two readings because we cannot bankrupt these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. On and for the amendment, I agree with a lot of the comments from the last speaker that this is a much more reasonable approach. Just to, I want the body to really understand and appreciate that we're dealing with two, you know, my committee, I'll back up and say, my committee yesterday heard a lot of testimony, and the bulk of our testimony was pretty much on this exact subject. And we're going to get to that in a later bill. But, so it really is part of the crux here. And it comes down to these two different tracks. And we're hearing these different acronyms that are showing us the tracks. But the tracks are basically CMS and OSHA. And so you're dealing with some type of standard or regulation that comes out of those tracks. And definitely looking at a significant number of, not just employers, but we've mentioned facilities that obviously draw off of Medicaid and Medicare funds. And we heard testimony that Medicaid alone, it would be seventy percent of nursing homes and fifty to sixty percent of other facilities that would basically fall into this realm. So I think this language does a lot to try to protect those employers from us running a risk where they choose to rightfully follow state law as opposed to federal law while we wait for the courts to sort this out. And then we run the risk of, obviously, them not receiving their reimbursements. So all of that's been said. What I really like about this amendment actually is in the, the lines nine through eleven, where it tells us that what it's doing is saying that to the extent the provisions conflict with federal law, that's to me very different than the existing language. It's telling us that we will actually take and juxtapose the state and the federal law next to each other. And there may be portions of it theoretically that prevail on either side. And you have some law. You don't just get rid of everything in the statute that you're dealing with right now passing. Whereas the existing language tells us that when it conflicts, all of Section two goes away. All of it goes away. So I think that this is a much more reasonable approach to say that the way supremacy actually works is you're going to go through each portion of that rule or regulation or law that is in contradiction to or in conflict with federal law. And it's not an all-or-nothing game sometimes. So I think that could create a better outcome for both employees and employers. I do think this amendment needs to be cleaned up on a second reading. I think I had the same concerns that the chairman of minerals had. I'm going to trust the chairman of corporations on his vetting that it works up in terms of the amendments we made. The other change I believe this will need is a simple amendment on a further reading that will include standards in the list of federal law, rules, and regulations. OSHA standards are actually, my understanding, the meat of what will define the rules, guidelines, and requirements. So I'm not sure that as drafted, it would accomplish what it's intended to accomplish. The existing language in the bill contains standards in this long list. So I do think just cleaning it up on a further amendment would take it that much further, Mr. Speaker. So I am on and for this amendment.
Thank you. Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I would urge a no vote on this because I don't think it, for a couple of reasons. One, I don't think it properly handles the situation of a nationwide stay or a stay. The second reason, and you know, we'll probably, you know, to talk more about this in an amendment where we have it head-on. But I just think that this argument that we're just going to back down every single time because of the quote-unquote supremacy clause. The supremacy clause does not apply when the federal government is outside of its enumerated powers, which here it clearly is. And the, at some point here, I believe, one, that the federal government would back down if we stood strong because they are not callous enough to deal with the implications of what it means to not pay those funds. And you know, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the Cuban Missile Crisis. I mean, you've got to get them thinking about the implications of their actions in order to get them to eventually back down. Because the implications of what they would do in removing those funds is very serious. And I don't think they would be willing to do that. And if they are, that's quite callous. The other thing I would say is that, well, let me think here, and a couple other points. But I would vote no on this, and then we can talk about it in future readings. Thank you.
Representative Howman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I ask the question to the makers of this amendment, whether the, the courts have to say that we're in violation of these actions, or can they just do this just by the president saying that he's going to withhold all of these monies from our state? Do they have to have a court ruling to say that, to do that? Or is that just simply a matter that the president can do himself? I don't know. What's the answer to that question, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you. Representative Yin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The, the strategy of mutually assured destruction requires two players, right? So it would require both us and the federal government. The issue is that the chips that we're gambling with are all of our healthcare providers. And that would be what would get destroyed in the situation. And the people who would suffer would be all of our constituents without that access. So again, I urge you to vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Further discussion, further discussion. I'm going to skip a couple of folks here. Representative Brown has not been up yet. Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To the question from the Good Doctor from the Land of Camels, we received, and I was trying to pull it up, but I couldn't pull it up quick enough. We received some legal information from our LSO staff that I think is pertinent to that question and maybe the rest of the discussion that doesn't necessarily have to go through a court challenge. Something like this were to come forward, it does not require us to be in a court challenge and have the courts decide. We've entered into an agreement with the federal government to allow Centers for Medicaid Services to provide funding back and forth to our hospitals and allow our nursing homes to be there. If we are out of compliance with those rules, CMS, the Centers for Medicaid Services, can actually stop funding. So it doesn't have to be adjudicated, doesn't have to go to a court system. I'm actually going to say I'm in agreement with the gentleman from the center of the state that I do think it's callous if they did this. I also think that it's very possible. I think that when you look at the, if we call it the Beltway in Washington DC, the number of high-powered attorneys that they're ready to launch up and launch a lawsuit against the state of Wyoming would pretty much end debt us as a state very quickly if they felt like they needed to do that to prove a point that you will implement this mandate, this mandate on vaccines. I don't think it's out of the question. You know, the federal government unfortunately does that. But, you know, we've heard a lot about constitutionality. I'm not a lawyer. I stayed at a, at a very fancy, you know, off-chain hotel one night. But what I will say is, right above the section of law that's been quoted here very recently about individuals and their right to freedom of healthcare access, the article in the section right above that actually says that the Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the land. That's all there is to it. And if we wanna fight and argue that, then we're talking about saying, well, we don't agree with that. Well, our founders who argued eighty-five feet down this hall to say that, no, we do agree to that. And we're gonna agree with that, whether or not we like it, we agree with it. It provides this state a heck of a lot of money. Probably more money than we want to admit. But it also provides us the luxury of having this debate on this floor. Provides us the luxury of being a sovereign entity within the United States that still says, hey, look, we understand that we're going to be getting some of this information back from the federal government. But this particular amendment comes back and says, hey, businesses, we recognize you. We don't want to put you in the position of having to figure out whether or not there's a stay or not. We want you as a business to be able to make that decision and live with those consequences. If that business chooses to put in a mandate and they fail, that's capitalism. If they put in that vaccine mandate and they succeed, that's capitalism. That's what our core problem, that's what our core constitutionality says, right? We want to be free market enterprise. Without this amendment, we're basically saying it's up to the CEO or the CFO or that mom and pop shop or whomever may be working to know whether or not there's a federal stay in a court in Louisiana. Our people are not worried about what's going on in another state. They're worried about running their businesses. They're worried about paying their employees, and they're worried about keeping their communities afloat. This particular amendment allows for that to happen without having to worry and put our business owners in a downtrodden situation where they have to focus on what's happening in another jurisdiction. It allows them to focus on their livelihoods, their employees' livelihoods, and continue their business. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Representative Gregor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just another question, I guess, for the body to think about as we debate this, and this really pertains to the bill as a whole, but also to this whole argument regarding supremacy clause and conflicting conflicting laws, state versus federal. And I guess my question, really, as we read the bill, is this bill does not prohibit mandates by companies. Says if you are going to do a mandate, you have to follow these certain procedures within the state of Wyoming. And so, as I said here, I I really I'm not sure we're gonna run into an issue where they conflict. We may come with, we, i- in this bill in particular, there are other bills where we may discuss where that be- may become an issue, but as we read this bill, depending on what the regulations say, there may there may not be any conflict at all. You may be able to comply with both laws at the same time. And so I just urge the body to think.
Thank you. Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speaker. I would uh, really urge a no vote here based on what the previous speaker was. I I guess the intent for two speakers ago, I guess the intent was, and and this is surprising me, to to preclude a stay. Uh, if there's a nationwide stay from a case out of Louisiana or whatever state, we should be able to take advantage of that. And we shouldn't say, well, the thing went into effect March thirty-first or February thirty-first, and we're gonna force it to go into effect because the original rule said it should, but there's a nationwide state. We should be able to take advantage of that. And I don't think this language uh, allows that, and I I don't think that's good policy. I mean, if if we get a nationwide stay, which I think is what's gonna happen, then the thing cannot be enforced. And we should be able to say, look, they still can't do the mandate unless they go through all these checkboxes. So please vote no on this amendment. I think we'll continue to work on this language and and uh, also have a debate on the conceptual things, which I think is actually a little different uh, discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, further discussion. Seeing none, members, we are voting on Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Four, House Bill one thousand and one. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Amendment is adopted. We have another amendment. In fact, actually, we have two more amendments. Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Five. Chairman Zwanis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would withdraw at this time. Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Five to House Bill one thousand and one.
Amendment number, amendment number five is withdrawn. We have another amendment. Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Six. Representative Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Six to House Bill one zero zero one. This is the one we um, were looking for on severance, and um, I will move the explanation of the bill over to the good pilot from House District Thirty-eight.
Thank you. Representative Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, this is uh, Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Six to to House Bill one zero zero one. And this really starts on page seven. Uh, the first couple of lines of the amendment are in the long title of the bill, and and so I think we can skip over that part of the explanation, but it really starts on page seven, line fourteen, and this is where we get into requiring employers to pay severance pay. And this is uh, again, in my opinion, an overreach of what we should require of our businesses in Wyoming. I was before you, just a short time ago discussing we are a business-friendly state. We've always patted ourselves on the back for being a business-friendly state. And when we start to impose severance penalties upon employers for things, that is going beyond being business-friendly. That is, in my mind, un- unnecessary and unacceptable. Again, we're business-friendly, so what this does, it deletes section C on lines fourteen through twenty-three. It deletes all of page eight. It deletes the first about half of page nine down through line twelve. And there there again, that is all the severance pay discussion. And then at the bottom of page nine, it clarifies in subsection G that they would still be avail- uh, able to uh go for other benefits in which the employee was entitled to outside of this law, but it would not require that employer to pay severance pay. And remember, folks, some of these employees may have never had a severance pay option in their employment contract previous to the state imposing this bill. And so expecting these employers to now be forced to pay severance pay when they're struggling to make ends meet as it is today, because we all know what the economy has been like because of this COVID nineteen issue. We all know how hard it is to do business because of this COVID nineteen issue. And now we're going to lay one more layer of of burden upon the businesses here in the state of Wyoming. So I would encourage an aye vote for this amendment. It does eliminate the severance pay discussion within this bill, and again, uh, aye for the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we're on Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Six. Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Six. Further discussion. Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm gonna vote no on this amendment, and that's because um, in my desire to find a balance between workers who through no fault of their own really are going to lose their job and the worker, I have a future amendment that just reduces the severance pay to four weeks, which I liked better. So I'm gonna vote no on this one, and yes on the next one tomorrow.
Thank you, Representative Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I urge an aye vote on this. Uh, most small businesses don't offer any sort of severance. Uh, the other part of this is the whole idea in in the larger part of this bill was that there are modifications for those refusing to take the vaccine. So the business is already modifying, allowing those people to work. Now, if that employee, after doing these modifications, still refuses, then they can let them go. But they gave them the opportunity and the option to keep their job. They chose not to. They chose not to vaccinate. The business complied. They chose not to continue with those modifications. The business shouldn't be punished additionally. I have all kinds of office policies. These are my office policies. You can't follow those office policies? You don't employ with me. I shouldn't be penalized to pay for people who aren't willing to follow the policies, who aren't willing to follow the minimum requirements of the job. So we're no longer talking about people being forced out of their position because they chose not to vaccinate. The whole premise of this is that we are making modifications of those people who do not want to vaccinate. The businesses making modifications, allowing them to continue their employment. They choose not to do that. Choice to work wherever you wanna work. The employers choice also who they wanna hire. So now we're gonna sit there and force them to pay for someone not willing to comply with their office policy. It's unfair. So I'm on and for this minute.
Thank you, Representative Yin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so question, what if I get fired because my employer didn't want any vaccinated individuals? Would I get severance under the spell? And if not, why would we give severance for people who are fired because they chose not to? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Chairman Greer, and then Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm I'm neutral on the amendment, probably going to vote for it. I did want to clean up just a little bit of the debate with my vice chair, is that this remedy is only available if your employer does not follow the law. That is the requirements of the exemptions. And so if your employer has a mandate and doesn't provide you with a religious exemption and you quit, then this remedy is available, for for example. So I just want to make sure we're having nice, clean debate and under- understand that.
Thank you, Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think actually the previous speaker just answered my question that I was getting ready to ask, but if you go back to, it says, basically, you have to comply with subsection A of this, this law here, and then if you go back to A three, it says the employer provides reasonable alternative measures to employees who have not received the vaccine. So my question is, we've talked a lot about the vaccine. I I I'm still in awe, to be honest with you, that we're debating something that we don't even know what's gonna happen. Month and a half ago, we had the president, you know, made mention that we were going to have something, but we've yet to see what we're actually fighting. And so at this point in time, if we're in this position where we're in a dark room just swinging our hands, hoping that we hit something, I wanna make sure that we're hitting the right thing. And so if I'm sitting here looking at this and it says that we employ, the employer provides reasonable alternatives, that supposedly was mentioned in the same speech that they were going to allow testing. And so we've done a lot of discussing about the vaccines, but are we going to allow an employee to quit their job because they just didn't wanna be tested to? I mean, that's a huge, huge statement, and I remember uh, so many, I I remember seeing so many different letters to the editor across the states and you know, this this chief executive of this state needs to get the federal unemployment stuff because we want people to get back to work because they're making more money sitting on off an emp- unemployment. But here we are doing the exact same thing in our bill by stating, we're going to give you money to quit your job. I I just don't see how how we can do that, but I really would like an understanding of whether or not a person can quit their job and still get paid if they refuse to get tested and or the vaccination. I- if the answer is that they can still get paid, man, I'm all for this amendment. Because this amendment takes care of everything that I I have a concern for. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Representative Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, the intent of the of, I think you understand already is that um, as we look at the penalties that could be incurred by a employer who does not comply with section two, we we do two things. We, a hundred dollars a day, and we tried to remove that. This body said, no, that's reasonable. We're gonna keep that in place. The second portion of that was, is if an employer doesn't comply with this, and then the person either voluntarily leaves because he doesn't wanna get vaccinated, or the employer terminates him because he won't be vaccinated. It requires the employer then to pay severance, and we're saying that that is just too punitive on the employer. There's a, that kind of comes back to the discussion that we've had on there about um, conditions of employment and whatever, and w- we're, I, the feeling um, from the sponsors of this amendment, that's just uh excessive, and would encourage you to vote against it.
Thank you.
No, to support, Mr. Chairman, to vote for the amendment.
And I thank you again. Further discussion on the amendment. Further discussion. Further discussion. All right, seeing none. Members, we're voting on Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Six, House Bill one thousand and one. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment is adopted. All right. Now, for, I've just, one, sure making sure there's no more amendments. But two, um, is there for any further discussion on the bill? Further discussion on the bill. Chairman Zwanis.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And and really, it's just a question I I think for you and the chief clerk. Uh, on every now and then, every couple of years, we actually engroll bills where we take all of the amendments and track them in um, before second reading. Because I I know there are some more amendments coming forward, and um, as I'm working with LSO on some of mine and some of others, they are getting confusing. Um, and so I don't know if that's an ask from from me personally to the to the body, but if we could have LSO, and I know that does take a couple of hours, engroll a new version for the body to put online, I believe that would be helpful. I'm just making that suggestion.
I uh, I I don't think I would get one objection from this body to that. So we will make that inquiry. Um, thank you, Chairman Zwanis. Further discussion on the bill. Representative Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and a question, if I may, is typically, so we've gone through the amendments. But then
Further discussion on the bill.
So further discussion. Have we walked through the bill enough? Is that what we're
The floor is open to anybody that wants to comment in
If I may.
Any terms, as long as you want. Please proceed.
Thank you, and members of the committee, thank you for indulging me just one more time. I uh, as as I've looked through the bills as we got ready for the special session, my biggest concern is that um, we're we're mad at the federal government because they're trying to impose overreach and impose this mandate that requires vaccination. I don't think anybody should be required to be vaccinated. And so then in response, we write in and we try to, and we actually do the same thing, but just from the opposite end. So if I'm an employer, if I own a own a truck stop, if I own a sewer cleaning plant, or if I own a long-term care facility, and I feel that it's important for the benefit of my business to mandate vaccinations, we make it very, very difficult. We're gonna go in and we're going to require them to um, have written evidence that that it is even necessary, even though it's my business and I might wanna um, require it. Now, this takes effect immediately. But we're given the determinate, we're, we have to send something into the Department of Workforce Services who is now we've put in place to be in charge and draft rules and emergency rules. So our business people who, I may have a legitimate reason to do the mandates is gonna have to wait how long? Gonna have to wait sixty days. But then I have to wait how long before I hear back from the agency that's put in charge? I don't know how long that's gonna be. I think that, I I think that we just continue to create problems for for the business. I think um, the the burden of proof is on the business that it's um, that they need to um have a mandate other than, I think, which is just contrary to what I think typically we do in Wyoming, which is um, that as a business owner, if I feel that this is what I need for my employees, that I can make that a condition of employment, and and if my employees don't like it, as the good chairman of minerals pointed out, they could all walk and go across the street. Well, whose fault's that? Mine. It, and and that's a fault I get to have. And why should we intervene there and try to control that? I just don't think we should. I think we're, I think that we're overstepping the bounds of what um um, state government should should do. So as we get ready to take a vote, I I I just would really encourage you to vote against the bill. I think we've done some things to the bill that improve it, but I, overall, I um, and I understand the intent of the bill and why it was drafted. Um, but I think it's an overreach of of state government on to the of, of state government on to the rights along to business owner and would encourage no vote.
Representative Fortner, I see your hand up. Would you like to speak to this bill?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chairman.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. I just recently had two major back surgeries. One about a week ago, well, the first one was a week ago yesterday, and the second one would be a week ago today. And, and I've worked for over a year with an insurance company trying to get this, this operation in place. And about a month out from the operation, I was notified that I could not have my operation unless I had a vaccination. To me, this conversation is, is, is a good conversation, and I think it's going in the right direction. And I think if it can happen to somebody like me who is a one-man employer and is owner-operator, and they can hit me that hard, force me to take a vaccination prior, a month out prior, which I could, which I basically had my back to the wall because the insurance company said, if you've already been, been approved for this operation, there's not, not a, for sure thing that you're going to get approved for a second operation. You better take what you got. So I took the vaccination basically against my will so I could be out of pain. That, that's what I want to make everybody in this room or in, in the House and the Senate to understand. It's already happened to one-man crew, me and others out there, I'm sure. We don't have to wait for president to make, make a mandate, I don't think. I think it's already been made. I think that we're already, the hammers have already been lowered. I think we're just, the repercussion is going to depend on each individual, how hard they get hit by, by these mandates. Thank you very much, and thanks for letting me be here and speak. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Fortner. I'm glad you made it home safely. Continue to rest. Representative Banks.
Thank you. Just want to maybe echo the sentiments from my good friend who is in the land of the Wind Rivers. I think we've made some positive changes to this bill, but I have some real big concerns that I shared with you, some emails from the mine managers in my neck of the woods. They are the largest employer in my area. They really are the base of the economy in southwest Wyoming and have some real serious concerns about the conflicts that will arise from this bill. One of them shared with me some extended information that I didn't forward on. They operate two facilities in southwest Wyoming. One of those facilities is mandated by OSHA, the other is, is mandated by MSHA, the, the Mine and Safety Organization. In addition to those two organizations, they're also overseen by BLM and the EPA, and then they also have state regulations they follow. Very highly regulated industries, those industries can be shut down, you know, in an instant due to those federal regulations, and we're just compounding on to those regulations with these state regulations. So I would urge a great deal of caution as we go forward and urge you to vote no on this bill.
Thank you. Other members, other members on the bill. Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Ottman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The representative from the northwest part of the state just kind of reiterated one of my concerns about all this. Been listening to the debate and conversation for a couple of days. The main reason that I believe that this discussion and this legislation was worthy of looking at is because I believe that people have the choice of what they want to do. If they want to get a vaccine or inoculation, that they should be able to do that for whatever reason, if it be for healthcare or whatever. But on the other hand, if they do not want to partake of this, to force someone to do that is just, it, it goes against everything that we stand for. What I'm hearing today, and it's causing me confusion, is we're, we're talking about the rights of private business owners, which I wholeheartedly agree with. I mean, it's the backbone of our nation. But where I see these mandates primarily coming from is corporate America that has come down, or anyone that partakes of federal funding. And that is what I believe that we were here about, is to keep the federal mandates from coming down and affecting us. And since it's part of our nation, how we can stand up against that and still be free to run our businesses and have the freedom of doing what we want to do with our healthcare. So as this discussion is coming to an end, I still don't understand with all the myriad of amendments to this bill, where are we? Are we protecting our small business owners? Are we just worried about, you know, contracts? The main thing was letting people choose. That's what I thought we were here for, letting people choose, whether that be business owners or people, employees. But nevertheless, we've got to have something because it is not working. As far as discussion that went on yesterday about children, it's not coming to children? Yes, it is. Yes, it is. They're talking about it today. So anyway, I would, I just want clarification. So if anybody can do that for me, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for almost 30 years, I operated small retail businesses, and those businesses sometimes had as many as a thousand people a day coming through them. Consequently, one of my highest priorities was ensuring that I was providing a safe environment for the customers, for my employees, and my family, because we worked there too. Back then, it was more about making sure that, for those of you who don't know, one of my businesses was a children's store, making sure that children, unattended children didn't walk out the door into the street. That was the level of concern at that time, more or less, but things didn't fall off shelves, whatever. Clearly, we're in a different time. And in terms of providing a safe environment for all of these people, I would be considering requiring a vaccine mandate. Don't know, but that would be one of the things that I would be considering. And I look at this bill and going, this is going to be problematic for me if I cannot provide a safe environment. But the thing that's become really clear to me today, I'm a legislator, I get to listen to this whole conversation, and even I'm still a little bit confused. As a small businessman 15 years ago, when I was not a legislator, I don't know how I would be able to provide that safe environment, knowing I was conforming to all of the laws applicable. As a consequence, I think it's really imperative to protect, protect the small businesses like mine, that we vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So this is a, this is a hard place to be. As legislators, I think that we all want to protect Wyoming citizens, whether they're business owners, or they're just citizens out there, or small business or large business. And we've been placed in a position that's really catch 22, we can't really win. There's going to be people here that we're going to make unhappy at one point or another. If we pass this, there's going to be people that's going to say it's not, not tough enough if we don't pass it, where they're going to say you haven't protected us enough. So as I look at this, all of you that know me know that I've always been pretty strong towards business, very, very supportive. I wish that our community of, if we could roll the tape back a year ago when we were making decisions of who was essential and who wasn't, that maybe we'd have gotten involved at that point. But we didn't. And now, now we're faced with this dilemma, and it's a hard dilemma. How much do we get in between the federal government and the Wyoming citizens? For me, that part is, would be pretty simple, but now you've got to throw business into the mix also. And some businesses unfortunately have chosen to act on a speech, not even a mandate, not a law, which makes our job all the much more hard. And so I look at that and I think, for me, I look at this bill, there's things about it that I don't like, especially after the amendments. But we need a vehicle to tell that our, tell our citizens and our business owners that we actually mean business. We're going to protect as much as we can. We're going to figure this out. We're going to hash this out, and we have to have a vehicle to do this. So I'm going to ask you to vote aye on this bill. There's things about it that I really don't like. Maybe we can fix some on second or third reading. But we owe it to those citizens out there, including our business owners, to try and get this right. So I would ask for an aye vote. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Further discussion on the bill? Further discussion, Representative Yen. My apologies, Representative Yen.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know sometimes I can't be seen over your monitor, but I appreciate you noticing me. The, the, members, I, I want to, I want to come up with a scenario for you, right? So where the question was, how will this affect small businesses? And I, you know, I think it won't affect some of them, but I think it will affect some. If I'm a small business and I want to make the decision to put a mandate, I weigh the pros and cons. You know, some of the cons could be, I, I'm limiting my hiring pool, right? I, I may have people who are unhappy with the choice that I make. I might lose an employee, but let's say I weigh the pros. The pros are, I have a fairly loyal restaurant staff. They, they all already decided to get vaccinated, and they don't want a new employee to join us that is unvaccinated. And at the same time, I want to protect all the customers that come through. I don't want them to catch anything from my employees. If my employers, employees catch COVID, my, my restaurant could shut down, right? Because I, I can't make enough shifts. And then, even then, hiring pool is tight. So I want to keep my loyal employees. They are all vaccinated. I'll decide to put in a vaccine mandate. Okay, done that. I didn't know. I didn't know that the Wyoming legislature passed a law. You know, a lot of people in my community, they don't even know we're having this session, unfortunately. It's, it's partially my fault. I do think I need to educate my community more, but it, if they don't know, an employer, and someone could come in, try to get hired, you find, I find out that they're not vaccinated, I find out that I'm being fined every day, and I find out that I've broken the law. I, what, my question to you guys is, why, why would we take this choice away from our small businesses? It won't affect a lot of people. That's true. They, they won't implement a vaccine mandate, but why would we hurt every single small business that does want to do something to keep the health and safety of their employees and keep the health and safety of their customers? So, members, I'll ask you to vote no on this bill in Committee of the Whole, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Representative Knapp.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, when a, a bill comes to be ready to be voted on, we all make the comment of vote your conscience. And I've been sitting here listening for the last two days, and my conscience is telling me something. When we do redistricting, I don't look for how many corporations or how many businesses are in my district. It's the citizens. It's the voters. That's who we represent here, is the voters, the citizens of Wyoming. So businesses right now aren't given a choice, they're given, they're given a mandate, and it's this elusive mandate that we're all trying to identify and defend against or be proactive with. To me, this is a proactive bill. This bill is saying, you're guaranteed by the United States Constitution, and you are guaranteed by our Wyoming Constitution, that you have certain rights. And one of those rights is a right to make choices for yourself. That's what sets us apart as Americans from the rest of a lot of nations out there. We are given a choice with what we do with our lives, whether it's to start a business, whether it's to take a vaccine or not take a vaccine. And we've let a lot of emotion in here between vaccinated and unvaccinated seep into what we're in charge of, what we are charged to do. So I would say, as a small business owner too, I have a lot of rules. You can go to lunch at a certain time, but I can't tell you what to eat. We have a healthcare program, but I don't tell you what vitamins to take. And we may have a belief in overpopulation or not overpopulation, but we certainly don't force people to have, to get rid of a child. We have certain rights in this country, and it's because we have choices. These small businesses, and they put in a hundred limit, a hundred employees, and I believe that that will be unlawful as well because it violates an arbitrary and capricious standard. Where did they come up with a hundred? What's the difference between a hundred business and a 99-person business? It's arbitrary and it's capricious. So this mandate, which is not a law, which we don't know what it is, which we haven't seen the rules for, we're trying to plan around that as a defensive bill? No, this is an offensive bill to say Wyoming has a constitution, we will stand up for our people's rights, that is what we are charged to do, and I, I encourage you to vote your conscience.
Thank you. Representative Sherwood.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have thoroughly enjoyed our conversations today, and I'm really proud of the work that came out of minerals and what we've done to the bill so far. But I want to share with you why I initially voted no on this bill. One, the OSHA rules aren't out yet, and so I do feel like we're flying blind. I also feel the bill doesn't differentiate between small or large businesses, which leaves uncertainty. And while necessity may be the mother of invention, uncertainty will slow our economic recovery. This bill will be a burden to our entrepreneurs, and it essentially says that we are willing to prioritize the personal freedoms of a hesitant minority over those entrepreneurs who are also our constituents. The business owners are also, as individuals, our constituents. And so we're pitting staff against job creator in this bill, and we're sending the wrong message that Wyoming is not business friendly, that we're willing to provide uncertainty to those people who are considering growing their businesses here in Wyoming. So again, thank you for this thoughtful conversation. I think we've had passion and compassion, and it makes me proud to be a member of this body, but I would ask you to vote no on this bill.
Thank you. Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There's been a, a lot of discussion about small business here over the last few minutes. I, I can't think of something more damaging to small business than forcing them to close. And yet, that's what occurred last year for months and months and months at a time. And in the general session, when we tried to deal with that, it's interesting, it's fascinating, the chorus in the mainstream media that is talking about small business, they were on the totally opposite end of this. They said, yeah, they want small business to close, the media, and all the groups pushing that. But now on this suddenly, the fact that we're going to look at this relationship, this employment relationship, which we already do in the statute books, there's a whole section on it. This is a form of discrimination is what this is. And you can't just pick and say, well, it's not the form that you agree with, so it's not going to be in there. The hypocrisy here and some of the, some of the, the arguments that have been made, especially out there in the media, are very disturbing and they're contradictory. This is a protection for small business. It is going to show that we are taking a stand and provide certainty because small businesses in Wyoming are run by patriots, and the, everyone I've talked to is against these mandates. It's the big corporations that are pushing them. So please vote aye on the bill. Let's continue the debate. Let's continue to work it. I have enjoyed the debate, haven't agreed with every amendment. I think there's going to continue to be amendments on both sides, but we're here, done a lot of work over the last month and a half. Remember, you know, that speech month and a half ago that kind of triggered this, this work, and let's keep it going, and I think we will get a, a, a solid product at the end. Let's vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I want to share with this body a couple of pieces of testimony. Not many of you were able to see all of the minerals committee meeting yesterday, but one piece that I took out of that particular meeting was very impactful to me. When the CEO of the corporation that manages the hospital in the city in the center of the state stated that the reason they had done this mandate the way they did it, including the exemptions and the way they were being handled, had to do with the fact that there was not a state law prohibiting it. So I'd like that to sink in for just a minute, that the reason they did it the way they did it was because we had provided no guidance. This bill is providing guidance. The federal government has required mandates in different places. has required mandates in different places, and they've always provided for exemptions, but with no guidance. So here, we are going to help businesses make a fair and equitable mandate. If it were up to me, I would try to convince this body to outlaw mandates entirely. I think that they're a bad, bad thing. I've no longer debating the science of these vaccines with people, because everybody's entrenched on whichever side of that issue they're going to be on. This is not about the efficacy or safety of this vaccine. This is about choice. With that, I'm going to share another testimony with you. This is from one of my constituents. A young man, who was a good friend of my son's growing up, became a nurse, and he's been in the ICU working this last two years. We were on completely different sides of this issue two years ago, or a year and a half ago, when I said that mask mandates were going to lead to vaccine mandates. When that happened, it, it was a strain on our relationship. But this year, with these vaccine mandates, he came back to me and explained to me that all the concerns he had last year have been trumped by the fact that now with MS, he's going to have to get this vaccine to keep his job. So he, he doesn't have MS, but his father had it. So he went to his neurologist to ask him, what's the risk here? His neurologist told him that if you take this vaccine, early onset MS for you is nearly guaranteed. This neurologist knew his genealogy, knew what this was going to lead to. So this young man said, can I please have a medical exemption? His neurologist told him that the restrictions that the United States Attorney General had put on these mandates, these exemptions, would not allow that neurologist to provide a medical exemption. So now this young man must choose between his job and his desire to provide for his family, and being able to hold his new son in a short amount of time. So we really have got to think clearly about whether corporations, which are a creature of the state, they are an extension of us, and we have a constitutional responsibility to protect the medical decisions, or freedom of those decisions, of our citizens. Those decisions are being affected by their employers, which again, are an extension of the state, a creation of this body. So I would ask that you think these things through very carefully as you make this next vote. Protect the freedoms of our constituents. Be well aware of the effect of a mandate on many lives. There is no cookie cutter response to these mandates. Everybody's different, including my constituent. So I'd ask that you very carefully make your decision, and I am on and for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the bill. Further discussion on the bill. Seeing none. Members, we are voting. Question being called. All those in favor of Representative Greer, Greer's motion, and when the committee of the whole rises to report, it do so with the recommendation that Bill Number 1001 do pass. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Standing division is required. All those in favor, please rise. Thirty-four. Thirty-six. Thirty-six. I apologize. I was looking at the screen. Thirty-six. All those opposed? Thank you. It will be less than thirty-six. Thank you. So House Bill 1001 has passed Committee of the Whole. As amended, and amended, and amended, and amended. Next bill for our consideration is House Bill 1002.
House Bill 1002, sponsored by Representative Summers, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates Prohibition and Remedies II, an act relating to the protection of individual rights. Mr. Speaker, your committee number one judiciary, to whom was referred House Bill 1002, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates Prohibition and Remedies II, respectfully report same back to the House, with the recommendation that it do pass with the following amendments. Ayes, Representatives Craig, Larson, Dan, Oakley, Olson, Rodriguez, Williams, Wash, Washit, Knows, Provenza, Yin, Zwanitzer, signed, Representative Olson, Chairman. Mr. Speaker, your committee number two, to whom was referred House Bill 1002, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates Prohibition and Remedies II, respectfully report same back to the House with recommendation that it do pass with the following amendments. Ayes, Representatives Kinner, Larson, Lloyd, Nicholas, Simpson, Stiff, Walters, no, Representative Schwartz, signed, Representative Nicholas, Chairman.
Thank you. I just want to make a, take, take a moment to congratulate this body, this body, for the character in which it debated, discussed, and even disagreed in that last debate. You know, our majority floor leader had thought that we would, you know, spend an hour per bill for reading. We just spent almost, almost five hours on House Bill One and Committee of the Whole. And I, I'm sorry, I can't do the math fast enough, but four, four and a half hours on House Bill One. So I congratulate you on the work you're doing. This is the real work. This is the real work. Yesterday, what people saw, that was getting ready to go to work. This is the work. And you do, you do deserve a round of applause after we get into the third reading. All right. Which will be two days from now on the, where we're going. So we're at that order of, so the, what's your, we've heard the reading of the bill. What's your pleasure, Chairman Olson?
Yeah, thanks to you, Mr. Speaker. I move that when the committee of the whole rises to report, it do so with the recommendation that Bill Number 1002 do pass. I will, here in a, hopefully a moment, turn over the explanation of the bill to the good majority floor leader who's the sponsor of this bill. But first, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to dispense with the committee amendment. So I would move standing committee amendment number one to House Bill 1002. Based on a discussion on the previous bill, I'm going to go straight into dividing this amendment just to separate potential discussion on it. My division number one of this amendment would be lines one through six, Mr. Speaker, and division number two would be lines seven through 12.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Proceed with Division One.
And I, yeah, I'll take Division One first, and I do move Division One. Division One simply is, you can call it cleanup language. Actually, part of it definitely is cleanup language to section, the section of the bill that are the legislative findings. We saw what happened on the first bill with legislative findings. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on this division. I thought it would be pretty straightforward. Line three of this amendment is literally a cleanup language, just clarifying that when we're talking about vaccination, we're talking about COVID-19 vaccination. And the rest of this language to the findings are some clarifications on other areas in the findings. And I would take any questions on those changes, Mr. Speaker.
Any discussion on Division One, standing committee amendment number one, discussion, discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, Division One, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Division is adopted. Division Two, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I move Division Number Two. This is a little more, this is a policy choice. This amendment deletes the penalty provision of the bill, and we'll get to a discussion on the bill as a whole. But in essence, there was a criminal liability inside the bill for a failure to comply with state law, which could impose misdemeanor offense of six months in jail and/or a fine of $750. Your committee number one elected to remove that penalty provision, and that is this amendment.
Thank you. Discussion on the amendment, discussion on the amendment, Division Two. Seeing none. All those in favor of Division Two, please say aye. All those opposed? Division Two has been adopted. So members, standing committee amendment number one is adopted. Chairman Olson.
Well, Mr. Speaker, I thought it might be a little more spicy. I guess not. Could be the afternoon, could be other things. I don't know. But with that, Mr. Speaker, I would turn over the explanation of the bill to its prime sponsor, the good majority floor leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Majority Floor Leader, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, there's another standing committee amendment that you want to just go ahead and do that?
The Chairman of Appropriations or an appropriator, if they'd like to move it now, they're welcome to. If they'd like you to walk through the bill, that's, that's fine as well. I see Chairman Nicholas, Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you. I would move standing committee number one to House Bill 1002. And, and basically, it's the re-referral for appropriations. If you go to page four, that's why, excuse me, page seven, the bill appropriates a million dollars from general fund dollars to pursue, for the legal funding for actions brought authorized under this act. So ladies and gentlemen, what we did, we contacted the chief executive's office, as well as the attorney general's office, and inquired how much money they thought they would need to pursue the actions that are identified in this bill. And in point of fact, you know, they've already been meeting with other attorney generals. Now, they already intend to join multiple lawsuits that are, are in the pipes as soon as the regulations come out. And so they don't, they don't need outside expert lawyers to participate, or to have the state retain an expert or a lawyer in order to pursue the litigation. I've actually been involved in these type of, of state pursued litigations when I worked in the Attorney General's Office. And for example, I did one where we, we combined with Montana, Idaho, and Washington, having to do with endangered species issues. And so we divided up who got the briefs, who argued. I had a lead counsel, and typically, the larger states have some very competent, excellent lawyers that do nothing but pursue these type of litigations on behalf of their, their states. And it's fun to participate in, because the briefing is outstanding. They do a wonderful job. And I've seen it time and time again. What they did say is they may need money for expert witnesses and for travel, and to pay their contribution to whoever that's going to be when, when, when this type of litigation is, is, is taken up. And we said, well, how much do you need? And they said, and this is the number. So we reduced the million dollars down to 250,000. So I asked for your favorable approval of the amendment.
Thank you. Discussion on the amendment, discussion amendment. Majority Floor Leader Summers.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. You know, I think you always hear this, right? Vote your conscience. But I think you can. I mean, we can put a million dollars in this, in this pot. And if you read the rest of the language, it'll revert in 2024. So it's not like, it's not like it's going into a dark hole that'll never be seen again. It reverts in, in time. You know, and as far as our Craig report, I believe we're 1.35 billion general fund looking, we will be up. So I think we, we have the money there. I think it's just a matter, it's really about the message, and whether we want to show a message of, of which value. I don't disagree that their value is probably right. They checked it out. It's just a matter of, of what message do we want to show? So.
Further discussion on the amendment, further discussion. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. All those opposed, no. The amendment is adopted. We're back on the bill. Majority Floor Leader Summers.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. Mr. Speaker, members of the 66th, I bring you House Bill 1002 and ask for your favorable consideration. House Bill 1002 is designed to push back against federal vaccination mandates. And that's really what the bill is about. Through the bill's findings, it asserts that citizens and states have certain rights under the US Constitution, the Wyoming Constitution, and under Wyoming statutes. I rarely ever vote for findings, but I do believe this is the time for findings. And the reason I believe that is, often, we write resolutions to the federal government, and they are basically findings of what we believe. This is, this is the opportunity to do that through, through a bill and through statute. It's not just a resolution. And, Mr. Speaker, the bill forbids a public entity from enforcing any federal COVID-19 vaccine mandates until all challenges have been exhausted in the federal court system. I think we exhausted ourself on the word exhausted. So you're going to see me with like, three amendments to give you guys to decide what level of exhaustion you want. And, and then, Mr. Chairman, the bill gives Attorney General, with the consent of the governor, the authority to initiate or participate in litigation to resist COVID-19 vaccine, vaccination mandates. The governor already has that authority. All we're doing is simply just kind of reaffirming that, that AGU have the authority upon the governor's consent. And then finally, the bill now would appropriate 250,000 to the governor's office for the purpose of fighting federal COVID-19 vaccination mandates. And, Mr. Speaker, I will walk you quickly through the bill. And, and, and I think in the findings, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to go to page three, and I'll read a few of them, but not nearly all of them. And one would be Romanet Six, Countless Wyoming Citizens Fear Losing Their Livelihoods Because They Object to Receiving a COVID-19 Vaccination for Reasons of Personal Conscience, Religious Conviction, or for Medical Reasons, Including Prior Recovery from COVID-19. On page four, you'd have Romanet Seven, The Decision to Receive a Vaccination is a Personal Decision and Should Not Be Subject to Government Intrusion or Dictate. And I think we put in COVID-19. And then we go on through a whole variety of findings. And page five of Romanet 13, By Imposing a COVID-19 Vaccination Mandate on the People and Businesses of Wyoming, The Federal Government's Action Constitute an Abridgement of Both the United States and Wyoming Constitutions. And then we go on to the meat of the bill in section two. And so section two is, is created statute 914103. And, and you see definitions, and public entity, and it, and it refers to 166101A8. And what that says is a public entity means the state of Wyoming, any state office, board, council, commission, separate operating agency, department, institution, or other instrumentality or operating unit of the state, including the University of Wyoming, any political subdivision of the state, any county, city, town, school district, community college district, or any public corporation of the state. So it's a very inclusive definition of public entity. And then, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Speaker, it goes on and, and states in B, and basically says, no public entity shall enforce any mandate or standard of the federal government, whether emergency, temporary, permanent, that requires an employer to ensure a mandate that an employee shall receive a COVID-19 vaccination until that date, that the federal regulation rule or standard takes legal effect that has the effect of requiring Wyoming employers to comply with the federal COVID-19 vaccination mandate. And then, it goes on with that section that talks about the challenge in federal courts. And, and, Mr. Speaker, that's the piece I want to talk about. And any challenge to the federal regulation rules or standards in the federal court system is exhaustive. So that is the discussion we had previously. In this period of, of, of when we are going to have an appeal, if we have this in place, it puts county hospitals in danger. It puts, it puts any public entity that had, as a nursing home in danger of, of being in this for never, never land of, of not being able to comply with a federal mandate and not receiving the money that they might get out of CMS, for example. I think that's the, and that includes state agencies that have facilities. And I, I think of some of our, our health facilities around the state of Wyoming. So. So I think we worked really hard in the last, in the last bill to kind of find some language. I think that could be refined, but you'll see me bring that exact same language in a minute. But then, Mr. Speaker, it goes on to say the governor shall certify to the secretary of state any occurrence. And then obviously, the fine we did away with, and the reason is it gets real messy with a public entity, right? Are you going to find Joe Schmo behind the desk? Are you going to find the county commission as a whole, but because it doesn't say entity? And rather than, than deal with that, we got rid of that fine. And, and then obviously, section three is that language on attorney general, section four is the appropriation. And, and so, Mr. Speaker, I do have a committee of the whole, and I don't know if the one is numbered yet, did that last one? Because I have now, I think, Mr. Speaker, I have one. Okay, three. Give me a second here to thumb through this. Yep. So I have one, two, three. And so rather than bore you with one, two, and three, and I'll have to, I'll have to withdraw those, but I do want to talk just briefly about them in the expla, if the, if the speaker will give me that.
You plan to withdraw something?
I'll be, I'll do it really quickly.
Please proceed.
And I'm going to withdraw some, Mr. Speaker. And so really, what one would have done would have eliminated that whole period of, of that challenge process in courts to, so that it didn't make sure a public entity wasn't conflicting with federal and state law. But I don't think it did it as well as, as, as three. Two was a lighter approach, would, which would just basically accept, you know, give an exception for those entities receiving Medicare, Medicaid funds, or those entities operating under a federal contract. And, and I think even that's a bit problematic. So, Mr. Speaker, with that, I would, I would like to respectfully remove Committee of the Whole Amendment Number One, withdraw Committee of the Whole Amendment Number One to House Bill 1002. And, Mr.
We appreciate that, majority floor leaders, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I would also like to respectfully withdraw Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Two to House Bill 1002.
We respect that and appreciate that as well.
And, Mr. Speaker, and if you haven't refreshed, this just came in, so you need to refresh if you're online. This, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Three to House Bill 1002 and ask for your favorable consideration. And so, Mr. Speaker, this, this amendment goes into page seven, and, and it creates after line 10, which obviously there's no, that got, got eliminated, so insert and renumber as necessary. But, but the point being, it goes in after that section of B and creates another subsection. And then it says, this section shall not be enforced on or after the date on which a federal law, rule, regulation, or order is enacted that imposes a COVID-19 vaccine requirement or mandate on Wyoming employers to the extent that the provisions of this section conflict with the federal law, rule, regulation, or order. And the intent was to make it consistent with the last one we passed. And, and as we move along, if we move this bill, we need to keep them consistent, in my opinion. So that is the, the essence of the amendment.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Discussion amendment, Chairman Olson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. And this is just, I had the same, this is the same amendment basically that we pulled into the last bill to accomplish the same goal, and I had the same comment, and I, I mean, I might be getting into the weeds, but I, I think this will need a cleanup on a second reading as well. I, I think it's going to require the language of a federal standard, because I, I mean, again, I could just be in the weeds, but I, I think that on the OSHA track, what we're actually talking about is an OSHA standard, not an OSHA rule, not an OSHA regulation. I know we keep throwing these, all these different terms around as if, you know, the mandate, the mandate is, is, I think it's an OSHA standard. So I think it's a good, it's a good amendment in this, in the same, for the, all the same reasons that I spoke of on the first bill. I just think, and maybe our LSO attorneys or another attorney might correct me, but I think we should clean it up on a second reading to make sure that we're capturing whatever track that comes out on CMS or OSHA or MSHA, I guess there's another one. I think it's going to end up being a standard on the OSHA, MSHA side, so that's, you know, that's all I have, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Three, further discussion, further discussion, further discussion, seeing none. Members are voting on Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Three, House Bill 1002. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment is adopted. We're back on the bill.
So, Mr. Speaker, that's the, that's the bill. It's really just designed to, to push back against the federal government, tell them what our rights are, appropriate some money to fight the fight, and, and I would urge your support.
Discussion on the bill, discussion on the bill. Chairman's the one, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And so really, this is a counterpart. The first bill we talked about was for private entities and private businesses. Now we're talking about public entities. And so quite frankly, we're talking about ourselves, right? These are things that the taxpayers of Wyoming fund, that this institution funds and sends money to. Maybe a private business can decide if they want to follow the federal mandate or the state mandate and take that choice, and we call that capitalism. I don't know. When you have a state entity, they violate state law. I don't know who prosecutes them. I guess the taxpayers and attorney generals prosecutes against the defense, which would be attorney general. But I want to make sure we're aware of what we're talking about, because so many of our state entities in Wyoming are funded by these Medicaid dollars. Number one being the nice city of Basin, right? That's basically a nursing home funded by the state with Medicaid dollars. 95 jobs in Basin. We're going to put 95 jobs in Basin at risk with this bill, that if we're going to play chicken with the federal government, I mean, that's their entire economy, probably the entire county, right? Talk about the Life Resource Center in Lander. We're going to play chicken with the Life Resource Center after everything this body has done for five years to fund that, to take SIPA funds, to increase and make it a worthwhile facility? I looked it up, it's 391 jobs. Taxpayer-funded jobs that we're responsible for is this institution. We're putting those at risk. Veterans Home in Buffalo, everything we've done for Buffalo the past four years and the fights we had on where the skilled nursing facility would go, 50 jobs, 36 more in the summer. Thermopolis assisted living home, the Pioneer Home, 32 jobs there. I mean, Thermopolis, you've all looked at the census, did not grow that much in Hot Springs County the past decade, for having some issues with redistricting with that county. I don't think they can afford to lose 32 more jobs if push comes to shove. State Hospital at Evanston, certainly mostly general funded money, as most of you know, but a loss of Medicaid would be significant. 368 jobs. And the city of Evanston, based on the state hospital. Generally, general funds, but if you lose some Medicaid dollars, I don't know if they're going to make it work. You cut 10 or 15% on their funding, it's going to have an impact. So certainly, the state hospital is not the most significant, but it's significant. So these are now state employees we're talking about. This is ourselves. This is what we devote money to. Do they have a choice? I don't think so. When the legislature mandates what we're going to do, what does the Department of Health do? And it says, hey, the statute say, we got to do this. Are they going to close those down? And said, the legislature told us we need to? And we're not going to have any discussion on that? I, I just don't see a clear way forward voting for this bill and putting all of those jobs and all of those communities at risk, because it's a little bit different when the mirror's reflected on us, because we're responsible. This is no longer a private business choice. This isn't us choice, that we're putting all of our people at risk. I just want to make sure you know the decision before you on this bill, because I have a lot of public employees in my district, not in these communities, they're in your communities. But it's, it's a most interesting policy statement when we have to make those choices for the people we represent and all the taxpayer-funded positions that we've put into this, as long as I've been here, right? These have been the facilities that we fought over and over and over for and put a heck of a lot of money into. And one day, we're saying, I guess we're going to put them at risk and see if the federal government's going to get serious and cut off their funding. And if they do, and maybe the federal government will, I consider the federal government not saying, private business, you know, we're going to see what's going to happen, but hey, the state of Wyoming is, is acting up and telling us, you know, what we're going to do? Okay, we'll cut off the Medicaid funds to the state entities, see how they like that. I'm not willing to risk that level of chicken with the federal government, especially when I read the supremacy clause. I would hope you at least think twice about if you're willing to risk that with passing this bill.
Thank you. Representative Chairman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just to address, I think, some of the concerns of the good chairman of corporations, who's also a member of the Judiciary Committee, is excellent concerns, was spot on. In fact, we spent, you know, a couple hours in the committee number one discussing with the Department of Health and, or the department that oversees health, excuse me, and discussing with the association that represents the facilities that we're talking about, these exact concerns, specifically to the public entity's concern. We discussed that with the department, trying to understand, you know, budgetary, what that means. And I think there's really two, there's two scenarios that are, are the reality. One is that, and we've already discussed this on bill one, you have the supremacy clause issue is sorted out in a court of law. So you're, that's not going to happen next month, that's not going to happen tomorrow, it's not going to happen specifically, and this is the most important thing for this body, before you come back in February. So whatever on that track may and may not occur because of a choice a facility might make to follow state law versus federal law, no one is going, no one can possibly be defunded before you're here in February to address that budget. It's just not even possible for a court to move like that. If anything, there'd be a stay, and we've already talked about all that. On the second track, which is the more likely track, we discussed with both the department and the organization that represents the facilities, what would happen to one of our facilities if they stopped compliance with the federal law? They issued a letter that says you may not be in compliance, a decertification letter for Medicaid and Medicare. We don't know exactly what the rule in Reg is going to say that process might look like, but what I think any of our guts would tell us as lawmakers is that there's going to be a right-to-cure period. There's going to be a period of time that the facility or the state of Wyoming, or whatever public entity we're talking about, has a right to cure whatever they've done that's in contradiction to federal law. That is not going to, that's not going to expire before we're back in February. So once again, you're back here in February before you even have to worry about that facility being decertified. We specifically asked the department if that had ever happened. The answer was no in the state of Wyoming, that to their recollection, they couldn't point to a specific instance of a decertification. We talked earlier about OSHA primacy issues in the state of Utah as an example, where a state's been issued a letter. But again, that's exactly what we're talking about. They've been issued a letter, right-to-cure period, and then we get into the issue of the funds stopped flowing. So I just want the body to take all that into consideration, and I'm just really trying to bring some of the information out of the committee to the floor, so that you understand that your committee number one did wrestle with these questions, did wrestle and speak specifically with the department and the association with those concerns. I think there's still concerns, it's still a public policy decision you have to make, at least from my perspective, and I think majority of the committee's perspective rested safely on the assumption that nothing's going to close down immediately, nothing's going to be decertified immediately, and certainly not before you're back here in February to reassess budgetary concerns or even this bill if it were to become law. So take all of that into consideration as you're, as you're making your decision on this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sorry for being long-winded.
No worries. Thank you very much. And I'm going to go to Representative Fortner, he's online, and Representative Fortner, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, once again. I would like, I've heard several different comments today on the subject of federal funding. I think we've been, we've enslaved ourselves to federal funding in the state of Wyoming, and I think this is the best opportunity that I can see to start breaking those chains and, and moving away from federal funding and start making our own rules and regulations here in Wyoming. We already got them in our constitution. I think we need to stand strong, stand tall, and be well-spoken. I don't think we need to buckle our knees every time we turn the corner for the federal government. I think, I think just the opposite of that. I think we need to be taking self-responsibility. I think we need to be, be managing our own businesses and get the federal government out of the way. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Fortner. I'm going to go to the majority floor leader, he wanted to respond to something before next speaker, and I see Representative Prevenza up next. Somebody walked away from the mic, so Representative Summers.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. And I agree with the good chairman of corporations on everything he said, except we just passed Committee of the Whole Amendment Number Three, which basically says if that federal rule is put in place, then those conditions go away, that section goes away. So, you know, and I'll reread it. We, we passed, this section shall not be enforced on or after the date on which a federal law, rule, regulation, or order is enacted that imposes a COVID-19 vaccine requirement or mandate on Wyoming employers to the extent that the provisions of this section conflict with the federal law, rule, regulation, or order. So I think that covers.
So I had a representative move from one mic to the other who had been waiting for a while. So Representative Henderson, and then we'll be Representative Prevenza. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Real quick, I fell asleep last night when I reviewed the committee video. On page seven, line six, it's talking about the notion of six months in jail and 300, or three-quarter of a million-dollar fine. I, I'd ask for some, some, some information to understand the basis for that sort of enforcement. Unless I missed it, I don't think we've amended it out yet, but that seems kind of excessive. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. I think somebody will get with you on, on your query. Representative Prevenza, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I realize in the amendment three, where we take out the provision for Medicaid and Medicare dollars, but we had, we, does that include education, right? So we see that we can follow the federal mandates if it, if we are receiving funding for Medicaid or Medicare. And yesterday, we had a really important discussion about what that meant. That meant 1.4 billion dollars per biennium in Medicaid and Medicare funding, quite a few people who don't, who would lose access to healthcare. But what does that mean for public education that also receives federal dollars to help pay so that we can ensure equality and equal education in the state of Wyoming? So if we, for schools, which are a public entity under this definition, are we going to lose federal dollars to help pay for education? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further discussion, further discussion. Representative Yin.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I just need some help in trying to figure out what the bill does now as amended. So if the good majority floor leader could help me understand what the bill does, that'd be great.
Any other discussion before we understand what the bill does? Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. And so what does the bill do? What the bill does is tell the federal government that we have certain rights as a state, and then it appropriates some money to fight that fight in court. And that's basically what it does.
Further discussion on the bill, further discussion on the bill. All right. Further discussion, seeing none. Question, all those in favor of Representative Olson, Chairman Olson's motion, when the committee of the whole rises to report to do so with the recommendation that House Bill 1002 do pass, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The House Bill 1002 has passed Committee of the Whole. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our last bill on Committee of the Whole. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our last bill on Committee of the Whole. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I moved that the Committee of the Whole rise and report.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Reading clerk, please read the Committee of the Whole report.
Mr. Speaker, your Committee of the Whole, having had under considerations, bills on general file begs leave to report as follows. Following House Bill 1001, Standing Committee Amendment Number Two, the Majority Floor Leader moved to beg leave to rise and sit again until 1:00 P.M. House Bill 1001, do pass, amended. House Bill, House Bill 1002, do pass, amended. Signed, Representative Barlow, Chairman.
I move the adoption of the Committee of the Whole report. You have heard the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Congratulations, Special Section, the Wyoming 66, House of Representatives. Give yourselves a hand. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I moved that the House adjourn until 8:30 a.m. tomorrow, the 28th day of October.
Any announcements? Any announcements? Chairman's want it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee Number Seven, Corporations, Elections, and Political Subdivisions will have a quick meeting in the Historic Supreme Court Chamber in about five minutes to go over some redistricting plans and plot a course.
Thank you. Any other, any other announcements? Any other announcements? So members, um, we have made arrangements with our LSO staff, Mr. Shaw, they will have an engrossed copy of House Bill 1001 for our use. Um, it is not the policy of LSO to place those engrossed copies online. You're welcome to share them with people, but we don't make them publicly available. They will be in your mailboxes as soon as they're available. And hopefully it'll be later this afternoon. They are working on it as we speak. Um, so again, it will not be online. It will be a physical copy in your mailbox over here on the South Side. Second thing, members, is, um, as we continue to do regular order, tomorrow will be second reading. If you want to bring second reading amendments, certainly that is your prerogative. I would suggest so if it ends up there are no second reading amendments, we may give ourselves the option to go on to third tomorrow, accelerate and go on to third. And, um, so that's, that's an option that is before us. Our colleagues at the other end are probably going to stay in a, in a one reading per day mode. Um, at least that's what we're hearing right now. I don't know what actions they've taken today, if they have any bills left, quite honestly. Um, so it will depend on their actions today, what maybe they proceed with, um, during the, during tomorrow. But we will be convening at 8:30 a.m. for second reading. I have two bills on second reading. Any further business for the House? Announcements, privileges of the floor? So the Wyoming House, all those in favor, the Majority Floor Leader's motion that that the House adjourn and reconvene at 8:30 a.m. on the 27th, the 28th of October, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The House is adjourned till 8:30 a.m., October 28th, 2021.